Okay, it is February 18th at 5:30 PM. We'll call the Personnel Subcommittee Meeting to order. If the Clerk could please call the roll.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Sorry about that. Took the one from the right. So we're here this evening to talk about one agenda item, which is the evaluation tool for the City Manager, the Auditor, and the City Clerk. Present this evening with us is our Solicitor Cory Williams, Counselor Rita Mercia, CFO Connor Baldwin. We have our Consultant Mary Icardi, the Human Resources Practice Leader with the Edward Collins Center for Public Management, Assistant CFO Austin Bell, Counselor Eric Gitchia, and Counselor John Decoto. So I guess our first, I'm sorry, no, I said it, sorry, and our City Clerk. So our first item is going to be a presentation from Ms. Icardi. I don't know if Counselor, if CFO Baldwin would like to start the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you for this opportunity to bring an update to the Subcommittee, just for the purposes of the Subcommittee and the folks watching at home, to recap some background, and there will be a full presentation that will go over some of this. But back in the summertime of 2024, there was a meeting of the Subcommittee where we discussed some preliminary options for an evaluation tool for the three employees under the City Council's jurisdiction, the City Manager, City Auditor, and the City Clerk. And at that time, a recommendation was made to engage a third party to develop a tool to be used in the future for evaluating those employees. And so we've done that, and we've contracted with the Collins Center at UMass Boston. It's an organization we've worked with many times in the past. And so Ms. Mary Icardi is here tonight to give an update on the work that has been performed, to present a draft formative of an evaluation to the Subcommittee for discussion, and to have some back and forth so that we can finalize the tool, bring that to the full body for deliberation and approval for the calendar year 2025 evaluation of the City Council employees. So without further ado, Ms. Icardi, the floor is yours.
All right, am I on? There you go. Thank you so much, so nice to meet you all. I'm gonna take a minute to introduce myself in the Collins Center, in case you're not familiar with us, and then I'm just gonna jump into the slides, because you're very busy people. I'll walk through the slides, and then you can ask questions at any time during that. We're fairly informal. So as you may or may not know, the Collins Center is part of the McCormick School of Government at UMass Boston. We were founded in 2008 with the sole mission of helping governments be better. I've been fortunate to be there since 2009, so 15 years now. Amazing. I had little children when I started, and now they're growing tremendously. We have done with the Collins Center over 13 projects with the city, starting in 2010 or '11, I forget which year it was, our records aren't so good back then, with the management training. We've done things like, you know, STATnet performance. We've done a number of recruitments with the city. We've done some public works reviews and job descriptions, so we're very familiar. Longtime relationship with retired HR personnel, Mary Calery, so I miss her, but happy to see Neil in the HR role. I worked with him when he was in Medford, so I'm really excited to be working with you all. My background is all municipal HR and labor relations, a little bit of state. Prior to quitting my job 20 years ago, to be home with my kids, and for those five years, I did some independent work. I was the HR Director in this then Town of Watertown, now City of Watertown, Town of Barnstable before that, Wellesley before that, the Mass DPW before that, and a nonprofit in Ragsbury before that. So if you do the math, you know, I'm what we call seasoned. So I will, my partner in crime is just back from Indonesia. Her child, her daughter lives there, but it's Margaret Arsenal, and she has spent over 30 years at UMass Amherst in the Workplace Development Department. So she is certified coach, so you'll get to meet her at some point in the future. So it was she and I who did the research, mostly her, that did the research to develop a sample, and we'll end up walking through that. So really, what we want to talk about is what is performance evaluation? It's really a process. It's not an action, a one-time action, or a form that you fill out. It's the process of assessing, discussing, and communicating a predetermined set of criteria. And I see the form that you've used for the stopgap, and that's great, because it does address many of the same things that we will address, perhaps in a more substantive way going forward. So none of the work is lost or wasted, it's the foundation that we will go forward from. And as you know, you want to have not just a one-time conversation with people. It really is about the performance on the job, and yes, in some of the roles, it is how do the individuals act and interact, but that's all tied to performance. Next, I'm gonna say next, thank you. You know, and it really is a communication tool. The thing that is often missed, it should be two-way communication. This is not the parent telling the child what to do, and then judging whether they did it or not. It really is mutual understanding of expectations and how do we measure progress. Now, why do we do it? There's all sorts of philosophies of why do we do performance evaluation and performance management. Oftentimes, I will switch between management and evaluation, meaning the same thing. We really need to make sure that people understand what the expectations are, and we want to make sure that we all know our roles and responsibilities in this relationship. Clearly, the council is the boss of people, you know? Clearly, they're our employees. But having those conversations, and the key word, and we, when we underline words, it means it's a big deal, to encourage the dialogue, how often are you meeting with the people you're evaluating in a meaningful way? So it really is to encourage dialogue. You know, it's ongoing communication and touching base. If it's only gonna be one conversation a year, it's not that helpful, quite frankly. So the key points that we look to in helping you all decide and develop an evaluation tool is how are we tying things to the mission? What is the mission of the organization, the goals, and what are the strategic plans? So we want to have a context so that the work being done is aligned to the missions and goals. You know, how do we decide what the priorities are? Usually, it starts with, it's a two-way conversation, asking, what are your priorities? What are my priorities? Let's align them and agree on what that looks like. So you want to have that two-way conversation, and you do want to formalize it, though. By not having it be formal and really spelled out, we have different viewpoints of what did we mean by those words, you know, 11 months ago? So we really want it to be written down, and you'll see when we go through it, our recommended draft has an opportunity for that. And really, a key point which sometimes gets lost is the follow-up, the coaching, the documentation, the regular conversations. Are there check-ins? You all will decide and debate, do we have formal check-ins once a quarter with the Subcommittee? Do we have, you know, a mid-year review? How are we doing? Sometimes crises happen, and our goals go out the window. So how do we be nimble enough to work with that? So we have this beautiful little circle, although it's not that clear. It is about, you do the planning, you set the goals, you provide feedback, and then you do the performance review. So it's a little redundant, but we want to align job expectations, really establish and agree upon performance expectations. Without agreement, you can go be derailed. If there's not a clear understanding across everybody who's got a say in it, that this is what we mean by these words, and that's where, you know, we're in it for the long haul, to help you through this, to make sure there's clarity of understanding. And you really want to set the stage for regular communication, whether that's documented or, you know, some sort of formal communication. The categories, and we can walk through the form, we did have, we found a great tool by the suggestion of people from this fabulous city, that we kind of like Cambridge, you know? And so we're no fools. We took that public information and, you know, kind of formulated it, customized it, but what we will do is work with you to choose, what criteria do you really want? You might be, you are unique, not every job is the same, and it might be different across the positions that you're looking at. But right now, we're focusing on the manager. So it's leadership, council relationships, their management skill, the community engagement, equity, inclusion, the culture of the organization, the operational side of things, and the fiscal management side of things. Now, a key component which might be a little different or new is really coming up with, what are we asking to be performed? We can grade or rate on all the characteristics of, which we do recommend, that you have goals, and then you have criteria, like your checkoff form. How is the, you know, in general, what do we think about the communication, the feedback, the customer service, you know, availability? We don't like words like productivity, because that, you need to define what productivity is, but we can help you come up with a goal for that. So we use the SMART goals process, which means it should be specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. If a goal just says, do your best, well, how do you measure that? You know, you want to have a priority goal of, we want to implement, you know, I'm not gonna guess on what you want to implement. I was gonna say, you know, let's do a conversion to a different financial software, you know? I'll just put Connor under the bus here. And when do you want that? Is that a five-year goal, a two-year goal, a one-year goal? So we have to be clear about what it is we're asking for, and we will work with, and when we get to the end of the process, whether it's primarily the Subcommittee and then it gets fed out, you know, we will work with that. But everybody should be involved in developing the goals, not just the Subcommittee. We can work on the process, but we would want everybody who's going to be evaluating to be involved at the right moment, and we're gonna rely upon the Subcommittee to let us know who that is. So each of the council members will assess the performance after we create the system or modify the system that we've recommended, it's totally up to you. And we like, we do like the four-point evaluation. We don't like the excellent, highly satisfactory, satisfactory feels like mediocre, you know? So we use the meeting expectations. So that's how we have recommended it. And we really want each council member to identify the strengths and accomplishments, and growth, and development. We don't use the word weakness, you know, it's not your strengths and weaknesses, it's where do we need to grow or develop. Now, the tools that we would provide are sample language, there was, we did provide some, I don't know the full distribution of that, we may have been waiting for the next Subcommittee meeting. We have sample language for writing evaluations, guides on writing SMART goals, tips on evaluating the entire period, not just the recent. This is really critical. When you're filling out a form in December, do you really remember last January? So we've got to build in, whether it's reminders to fill out a quarterly or a monthly note, you know, to yourselves as counselors, how do you, how do you want to evaluate? You want to have these categories ever-present, not that you're evaluating every week, but formally, you know, we can do a reminder saying, okay, here's your quarterly time, put your thoughts down on this. Then you have, I don't remember what I had for lunch yesterday, never mind my interaction with one of my associates, you know, six months ago. So having an ongoing kind of check-in is very helpful. So what we, what we will work with you on is preparing for the review, have clarity on the forms and requirements. You all, I imagine, are gonna come up with an agreed-upon evaluation tool. We want to make sure everybody understands that, and we will meet with you all in the full council to say, you know, this is what this means, let's have a shared understanding of it. We'll give some examples, we will do, I don't know if I want to call it a workshop or a training, I'll call it a session, on, you know, how do you ensure or try to ensure objectivity, avoid personal judgment, invite employee input. Some councils and boards will do an opportunity to get feedback from others on that employee, that's an option as well. And really, the horns in the halo, in the most recent I mentioned, but the horns in the halo is, that person's always my favorite, and they can do no wrong. Or that person's always the devil, and they, everything they do is wrong. So we kind of talk about that and help avoid some of those pitfalls. Okay, so the follow-up slides show the form. Some look better than the others, but I do believe you have the packet of them. So here's some language, which was mostly based on the one we reviewed, but we did tweak them a little bit. You want to have broad guiding principles on the topics. Once you define the broad guiding principles, you then use the next part of the evaluation to do the specific SMART goals. We are recommending, and then when you see the next one is exactly the same form, but with space for a goal. Now, you all can decide, we don't need, you know, nine goals every year, but it should be within those guiding principles, and maybe you come up with, you know, we want to do five major goals, we want to focus on five, because there's nine too many. We don't know that yet till we get the conversations going about what it is that the council is looking for most. I make no assumptions. So this is where we would document your SMART goals under the guiding principles. So it depends on how the Subcommittee wants to work, whether we work with you to draft those guiding principles, to then share and get input from the full council. It really is up to you. And when we come back after, the one, next time we meet with the Subcommittee, Margaret and I will be here to kind of flesh out some of those things, because I don't want to speak for you in saying what I think should happen next. And then this just restates what the levels are. We can decide at a later point whether you want this to be a numerical scoring, like you had points that got added up and averaged, or whether you use summary. In the world according to Mary, which is a very happy place, points can be skewed, we're not sure the weighting is right statistically, so we'll have to take a look at that. So we can take a look at that, do we want points? You could have two council members totally cancel out the other points. What's important is what's the language behind the ratings? So we, maybe we do both, as in this first year of a pilot, to say, what does the score look like, but what is the language of the review? There will be more commenting and narrative than may, the council may have been used to, rather than, what are the checkoffs? You know, what does a two mean to me? What does a two mean to you? So we'll walk through that as we plan out the process. Now, the, the form in here, didn't copy that well on here, is, you know, what is the overall? So at the end, you're being asked to give, what is your overall thought or score and your rationale? And then this is where you would put your strengths and accomplishments or growth and development. Again, these are all draft forms, we can tweak them in any way you like. So moving forward, this is an assumption, and I know things can change. The Subcommittee will review, the full council will receive the Subcommittee either information or report, I'm not quite sure how to word it, and then we will come back and work with the Subcommittee on the next steps, to fine-tune things, work on timelines, process, and logistics. And then we, in our scope, is a planned, I call it workshop on this slide, it's a meeting or a session, to really talk through the nitty-gritty, going through the forms, you know, how do we develop these goals? And we will be there the whole step of the way, and define, helping you define the goals, getting the input. It might be a joint meeting with the person being evaluated. We don't want it to be, here's what we came up with, what do you think? It really should be a partnership with ideas, and we can be the facilitators of that. Or we can have you all decide, you're gonna do it yourself, and then we facilitate the meeting when you have the final conversation. So it sounds like I'm non-committal, but I want to be flexible. So that is it in the overview in a nutshell. I went quickly. You can see in the draft form here that you have, you know, that's what we are talking about, and it provides for the spaces, but this is something that the Subcommittee will work to edit and fine-tune. This is meant as a sample. So I'm happy to answer any questions. That was, I speak quickly.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. I think this is a great example, the Cambridge, we spoke about this one during our last Subcommittee meeting. It was one that I had brought forward as one that I thought was, it was very goals-driven, it was metrics-based, like, so I think the idea is to be fair to both parties, so that they know exactly what we're looking for, that it's not, you know, a punishment or anything like that, it's just, here's what we're looking to do. The conversation, I think, has been happening, but like you said, it hasn't been formalized, and I just think it's a more fair way to do things. The biggest thing that I'm not sure about yet, I guess you did touch on it, is how the whole group comes together to set the goals. So that's the only area of, I guess, hesitation that I have. I don't know if it's just a working group where everyone's invited, just like a Subcommittee like this, and then, you know, everyone can contribute, obviously, and then it would go back to the full body to decide. I just know, we have Counselor Robinson in attendance as well, you know, 3-1-1 has been a big priority for him, Counselor Gitchia, the facilities Subcommittee, the merged facilities, like how do we make sure that that's the same goal for all of us to move forward with? And then also, how do we make sure that the step that we take, like the first step for the facilities merge, may be just within the year that he has begun negotiations or talks with the union? It might be that simple. Like, so I guess it's just an ongoing discussion?
Sure, I think you bring up some excellent points. The blessing that I have in my colleague Margaret is, we can facilitate that goal-setting, you know, and do a priority goal-setting, you do a brainstorming, what are the ideas? Then you've got to break it down, though. 3-1-1 is so huge, it might be, what's the first-year goal? You know, and, but we can do that either at the Subcommittee level, or it may be wise to do the brainstorming goal session as a whole, and we can do, there's all kinds of fun consensus exercises of dots and priorities, and then maybe use the data we collect from that, whether it's decided that day or not, to then have it wordsmithed by the Subcommittee to then be shared. However, we don't want to double the work if it should be the whole group. So, you know, so maybe we start broader to do brainstorming, we're really good at that, quite frankly, and, you know, we put it up on the board and say, what are yours? Sometimes what we'll do is a quick Google survey on what are your top five goals? We summarize them, then go to a meeting, because sometimes if you start a meeting of what are you looking for, you can kind of waste some valuable time, and sometimes we could use that time in a survey that we then summarize. When we get to that session, we already have it up categorized, summarized, and say, okay, this is what we heard, and then we can do an exercise there. That's also, I don't know your team, it's also a great team-building activity for yourself as a board, as a council, you know? So then you're all hearing the same things at the same time, moving forward. So at what point the employee being evaluated is there, we'll have to, we'll have to brainstorm that one a little bit, because I do believe it shouldn't be every meeting all the time, because you've got to deliberate as, as an entity versus as one person. So, but I do think there's the opportunity for that.
Open it up to Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mary. I'm also a graduate from UMass Boston, so I welcome to low.
Thank you. Good to be back.
I like the idea, because each, each counselor have their own priorities. Their priorities are driven by the constituent that reach out to them, you know, say, this is what I like, our neighborhood, you know, things like that, open space, you know, like quality of life, you know, speed limits, and green space, things like that, that is really important. I like the idea that if we could develop a Google Doc and then send out to all the counselor, maybe list it five priorities that they would like to see the manager and his team carry on the next three years or two years, because we are elected every two years, so we may not be around next two years. So that's probably why I think it's a great idea. So we collect them all together, and then we can also meet and then brainstorming in a workshop, so that we can put all of that into a goal-setting for, for evaluation of the managers. So I think that's, that's what I like the most. We met because, for me, my second term on a council, and this is We met because, for me, my second term on a council, and this is my second evaluation of the manager, and we have just a blank form. So we have no idea, you know, which way. And that's why when we had a meeting as a subcommittee last year, I proposed that we bring in a third party to help us navigate and give us guidelines of which way is more effective way to evaluating, like, the manager and people who are under the council authorities. So I appreciate it, and I think this is a really great first step in the right direction. So I'm hoping that we can come together and do a workshop together and brainstorming and put together what are the priorities that we would like to see the manager and his team carry on the next two years. Thank you again, Mary.
My pleasure.
Councilor Belanger.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mary, thank you for coming in tonight. You really have laid out a tremendous, tremendous criteria for this subcommittee to assess the employees that we oversee. But, you know, we oversee three employees. I'm sure you're aware of the city manager, the auditor, and the city clerk. And they differ, they differ greatly in their positions. You know, it, this, so this shows me that, you know, in affairs that we work with the manager on that, we should be, and many of us are in, you know, if not daily contact, every other day with the manager. But, you know, there should be, set goals and priorities on certain projects, both short-term and long-term, that we can set goals and parameters and then meet at that time, and then set timelines, and then, you know, for better management purposes. So I think you taught me something in that regard, rather than a motion to get an update where, you know, we don't know where we're at, where we should be at at this point, where we'd like to be at at this point. Maybe we're lagging. So I think that's a great point you made. And it's, you know, it's, the other employees that we oversee, it seems like that, and this is my style, and this is, it's on me, that, you know, conversations are only as necessary. And, you know, we got a question on a report, when by now we know what to expect and when to expect it, that we should be sitting down annually and biannually, if not quarterly in some cases, and discussing upcoming reports, projects, whatever they may be, what can, and what can the council do to help you? Because we want to make them and their department most efficient as possible as well, that when they look good, they make us look good. So, and that management style is on me, and I think that needs to change. So you brought to light some very good points on our management style, that, you know, this has needed discussions, probably needs to change to a more frequent basis. So thank you again for coming in. I'll listen to my colleagues, and I'll probably have some comments later in the conversation. Thank you again.
Great.
Thanks. And I'll just add one more point, is when we receive the budget, each department head is listing what they've accomplished, and they're also listening, listing their goals. And I think that's a good starting place for us to have a discussion around them, with using them as our metric for an evaluation. So obviously, I guess my point is, I just want to make sure that they're involved, obviously. As Councilor Belanger mentioned, we have interactions with the manager daily, hourly sometimes, less so with the clerk and the auditor. So I think a lot of it is going to be working with them to make sure that we have a fair tool, and, but also having accountability with that tool. So I'd open up if anyone else has any questions. Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. I think this is long overdue. I thank you for bringing a draft forward like this, and I like the fact that it's a working document. So this tool here, though, almost has to be, I think, an annual evaluation tool that we can customize, carve it out as we see fit as far as the goals and objectives. I think with the annual review part, we're looking, we'd be looking at kind of short-term goals. I don't know if we could even consider quarterly goals that we'd be looking for as well as annual. But then also a mechanism for long-term, because we do see, like you said, the 3-1-1. That's something that I think needs to be broken down into different phases, that could be quarterly, annual, or biannual, whatever way you think, or the team thinks that would be the best. And I do think with 11 councillors, and as my colleagues touched on, a lot of this is driven by constituents, so eight districts and three at large. That large kind of, you're going to see a lot of overlap, I think, in some areas, but in some of the districts, you're going to see different goals and objectives set because there's different needs and challenges with, you know, just geographically. So I think being able to have a working document that we can carve out annually and put individual goals to satisfy, say, the districts as well as at-large, it would be very beneficial, I think, for evaluation. Thank you.
Councilor Dakota.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome, Mary. Councilor Scott did bring up a good point. When we're looking at this template for the city manager, I would imagine that for the clerk and the auditor, this will be quite, quite different that we're looking at. Do you have a template already in the workings that we could look at? Because this looks like it's just for the city manager.
We did not develop one yet. We were starting with this to get the concept, but you're right, those are more operational positions, so it would look a little different. There may not be the guiding principles and objectives, but we would use the same format. And we can work with the subcommittee on what timing you want to do that. I think the format, the tool itself, is what you want to do. The wording and what the goals are for them would be more operational than strategic, but that's up to you all to decide, and we can certainly do that. Our scope of work includes that. We were starting maybe in the fall with the city manager, and then we, you know, you've all done that one this year, so we can do this simultaneously. I think if we do the work on the city manager one, the others will fall into place from there. We wouldn't want to necessarily confuse things, but maybe at our brainstorming, we can do, what are your goals and objectives for the, all three positions, and gather that information? I wouldn't want to have that working session only give one, a third to each. I would want to be more thoughtful with dedicating a meeting for that. But we could collect, if we were doing that survey, we could collect the information on that. Whether or not the council members have their mind wrapped around those other two positions right now, where this seems to be the priority, we'll have to discuss, but we can do it in any way that you see fit. Our scope of work does involve that. Sometimes with those positions, maybe in the first year, it's done a quarter later, and you shorten that year, that pilot year, a little bit, but we'll take a look at that and do whatever you all want. It's about capacity of you all as well.
Councilor Gitcher.
Thank you, Chairman Scott. I think that a lot of this is really simplistic when you really cut it down to it. A lot of the goals are outlined in the three employees' job descriptions. When you look at it, like the auditor, it says, right, and responsibility for coordinating overseeing the maintenance of munis. You can elaborate on that and come up with a goal that fits within it. I think that those are the things. And when you look at it, it's basically like a request for proposal matrix on how your overall grades are working. And then they add up in the end, and I think that that's a very positive piece to look at. But again, it is a working document, and as you outlined in the beginning, you're looking at evaluating more often. And I think one of the thing is, one of the most important things is, performance evaluations are not supposed to be, I got you. It's supposed to be outlining things, and we currently do it totally wrong. We get an email after the data was supposed to be in, which was December 1st. We get an email in February saying you need it by this date. It has no provision in it that gives us the opportunity to actually sit with the person before you submit the evaluation, say, did we find common ground? Do you object to anything in here? Could you please highlight what you don't like? And sometimes evaluators come to common ground and say, yep, you know what, you're right. Let me go back and, because it does become a public record at that point. And it's very hard to pull back when you don't have the opportunity to actually evaluate back and forth. And I think that the working document piece is extremely important because it builds relationships. Two people can have total different understandings what economic development means in the Hamilton Canal District, right? One person may think one thing, and someone else may think a total opposite thing, but if you get the opportunity to sit with the person and go over the common ground on where you're going, it gives a great outline for a person to even achieve those goals or disagree with the path that you're taking and then set a different path that way. I've had the opportunity to do this, and sometimes employees that you don't think are invested in your work community become the most positive people, invested in the work community, and they're the highest performing employees. Again, when you go through it, I think it's a, it's a good start. I think that this is something that HR should already have in place. And it's a tough balance for me, because as Chairman Scott knows, we've all looked at other communities and had, seen how they evaluate and what their evaluation tools are. I guess I have one quick question to Mary. Mary, how many other cities and towns have you guys worked with in developing performance evaluations?
Oh, I should have looked that up before I came. We do a lot of training on it, but in terms of forms created, probably three agencies and three towns.
Yeah, so most times, most communities come up with their own performance evaluation, and come to you and do a seminar, and then bring it back and...
Yeah, we do, we do more training on it. Now, in terms of my coworker, she's created, she helped develop the whole UMass system, performance appraisal system. So it's, you know, we've managed them, I've managed many of them, I've, you know, worked with people to teach them how to do their SMART goals, as opposed to developing their whole system. In terms of, off the top of my head, we did it for Provincetown, we've done it for the town of Carver, we've done it, I've done it for housing authorities, you know. Cities, you'd be shocked to know, cities have traditions. And, you know, so usually, we are not developing the tool, but advising on it and doing training on it. But I will tell you, if you look across, if you've done some, and we did quite a bit of digging when we were asked to take a look at this, most have the same components. It's not, it's, the form itself is not rocket science, and the more complicated the form is, the more trouble you're going to have using it. So we really like the simplicity of this one, in terms of, here are your objectives, here's the wording that you're going to measure, and this is how we're going to execute, track, be flexible, and set you up for the next year. So it's a very basic process, but it's critical not to skip any of the steps. So we're excited for you.
And I don't, I don't disagree. And we had, how many, at one point, when we were all in this, we had like four different communities, we were ready to go, and then kind of fell by the wayside. And the hard part is that most of them looked exactly like the piece we have right now. And when you look at it, the balance between is bringing people together to sit down and look at a job description and say, what is the goals, and how do we get to these goals, and be fair in the process? Because like Councilor Scott said about the facilities department, what is the bottom-line step to just get at it? Is it just the conversation? Is that enough? Or is it, and then the manager could step up and say, no, it's, I'll take that as my goal, knowing that you're going to overachieve in it and get to a place that is acceptable. I think that this is good stuff. I think that we need to look at job descriptions first, because currently, the auditor is probably the toughest one for any of us to look at. They basically, day-to-day, report to the CFO or the manager's office and not to us. So when I go to evaluate, I don't have those answers. I got to call the CFO to say, hey, do you know this, or do you know that, or how do I get this information or that? So in my evaluation, I always write, spoke to the CFO, and he outlined, attendance is good, you know, work ethic is great, all of these things, because it's very hard for us to set that matrix and get that put together. So they are very different as was outlined. So I think it's a great start, but I think some of it has to be done by our HR department and brought that forth that way, because it is kind of, as Mary outlined, a very standardized piece to start with. And then the training piece would be something that maybe we all can get together and say, let's take this course, and get to a place where we all have a common ground. Thank you.
No, I would agree as well. I mean, the form is the easy part of this. It's the training and coming together to set the goals that we all agree on that is a little bit more complicated. And as Councilor Gitcher mentioned, another area that is the clerks and the auditors, that I think we all agree that we aren't at part of their active day-to-day duties. Perhaps we'll, we'll learn a little bit more ourselves, being part of the process and meeting regularly with them. And I've just, if anyone else has any questions or comments? Okay, I just have a couple more, sorry. The timeline that towns or cities usually follow between the goal-setting time, the evaluation, like, what is the time period that...
It's, we've seen it done two different ways. The issue is, do you have it done so that you, when you're going to give all these raises to people, you have it done before your budget is done? So you back it to December so that you're planning your next year's budget? You've probably already well-started your budget by December, but, you know, so we see it that way. Sometimes we see it on fiscal year, then, because employees don't like to hear me say this, performance evaluation is not about a pay raise. It's about communication and how are we doing? Sometimes it's tied to pay, whether you get an increase or merit pay. So it really depends on what you're looking at. We recommend, at least in the beginning, not to have it be a curve tied to pay. It really should be about the communication and how are we setting goals and expectations? Now, if somebody's due a raise because that's what you all are doing, that's fine, but, you know, it can be challenging that way, because people who are saying, oh, I don't want to cause the person to not get an increase, or on the reverse, like, I'm going to downrate them because I'm not happy with them. We like to take that away, at least in the beginning. So it really does depend. I believe, I don't know if you have ordinance language that says what you need to do, which is why I think we're moving at this point to say, it's for this calendar year, if I recall. Am I right on that? Yeah. So we're going to follow your timeline and your capacity to, you know, move this forward, and what sort of calendar? We can make any calendar work. It really, you're, you're the one who's got that many people who have to get together. We can set the dates in the workshops. It really is, will respond to your needs. And we have enough people who do this work. We actually have a brand-new person who's retiring from UMass Lowell, who does this work, and she's going to be joining our team, so we're pretty excited about that as well. So we have the capacity to serve your meetings. It's about when can you put the time in to get it done.
Very good. And I would just also add, Solicitor Williams, contractually, I think we have some language around performance evaluations. I know you mentioned using, you know, meets or exceeds or whatever, but we do have a numerical percentage that is in the evaluation language, so we would have to assign some type of, or remove that language if we didn't want language, like you just mentioned, but that...
We can work with whatever we have to in this pilot, and then it might teach us something for future, maybe ordinance changes or contract change. So we'll make it work whatever you need, need it to be.
Very good. Councilor Yim.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question for you, Mary. You touch upon the regular meetings, you know, with the three position, the manager and two others. When you say meet, how regularly should we kind of sit down with the manager so that we don't wait until the year-end to do all of that? So what would you normally recommend?
Normally, I would recommend at least quarterly, and you all would need to decide whether that's 11 people individually, a subcommittee, informal meetings. You might rotate that over the year. Maybe it's, maybe it's one every other month with half the, you know, I think you can come up with your own schedule, and you all are very busy people, but the theory is a formal meeting, at least quarterly, to pick up the piece of paper and read through it. formal meeting at least quarterly to pick up the piece of paper and read through it. Doesn't need to be long, and it doesn't, sometimes individual meetings help, more so than group meetings, but that's really a decision for you all for what makes the most sense. But quarterly meetings in a formal way is helpful.
Thank you, and I thought the same way, that if we meet quarterly, allow us to see how the, because from beginning, we set the goal based on the job description. So quarterly, we kind of gauge how well direction of that goal are going to be achieved, things like that. So you're correct, we have 11 of us, but each one of us has our own time. We can meet casually, quickly with the manager, kind of go over, and I like that idea. So thank you for the suggestion, yeah.
The, that one thing I would add to that, and I appreciate that, is oftentimes when we see this, particularly when things are first implemented, that one of the goals is to keep the council updated on progress in the goals, and that might be a quarterly report built into. And then, once you receive that quarterly report, that might trigger your meetings, because we don't want any party to this conversation to let it go. And I think having that regular requirement, and on the other two positions that are more operational, you could get quarterly reports on goals, but then only do a mid-year formal one. Obviously, if something comes up in a report, that's going to trigger a conversation right away. So it really does, it sounds like we're nonspecific, but it does depend on the nature of the job. And I think the quarterly report is a huge communication tool, and it makes us check ourselves as well.
Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. I agree. I think quarterly is a solid way to go, and I was just conversating with the solicitor. The only thing we have to be cautious of is, under the plan E formal government, that would probably be, I'd imagine, if the manager agreed, it would have to be like an executive session conversation, to have the entire group discussing the details, because I don't think that would lend itself to like a public hearing, so to say, where the public was chiming in on an evaluation, potential evaluation tool. So I think that's something we'd have to be mindful of as well.
Very good point. So now, I guess at this point in time, what would be our next steps? Is beginning the work to meet, to discuss the goals? I mean, what is your timeline for, suggestion for us, I guess?
Well, our timeline is whatever you want. It's my understanding, and I'm not the expert, that this subcommittee is moving the concept forward to the full council, or are we meeting with you first before that happens? So it really is your timing. We're available.
Chair Paul Baldwin.
Madam Chair, if I may, you know, Mr. Ball and myself have been acting as sort of an agent for the subcommittee with the call-in center, and we're happy to continue that work. But we want to be, you know, mindful that it is the subcommittee and the council who will be doing the evaluation. So we're able to move this as fast along as is necessary, but we, you know, we want to, like I said, be mindful that it's your process.
Okay, so should we bring it back to the full body, then, to, a report to the full body? Is that the...
I think, if I may, Madam Chair, that would be a really good next step. I guess if I, if I may offer some thoughts, you know, the city manager and the DPD have gone through a very long, deliberate process of planning and pulling together the Lowell Forward Master Plan, and, you know, and I've worked here for some time, bringing some of those goals and objectives from the master plan into the sort of very high-level overarching goals of the council that can be fed down into measurable, actionable goals for at least the city manager, if not the auditor and the clerk as well, would be a natural nexus for the master plan in this evaluation process. So I think there's work there that's been done that can be used to make this a little bit easier.
Okay. So I guess at this point in time, we'll just take it as a report of progress and continue with the work. I don't know if we need to move forward to the whole council, I'm saying, for, like, you know, their approval? Yeah, so we'll do a report to the council, and then we'll come, move forward with that. So make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.